Good evening, everyone. I'll call this order, this meeting to order. We have one person for the open forum. This is, you're allowed three minutes to speak. Would you please come forward at this time, Mary Barnes?
I guess I could use your pen. My name is Mary Barnes. I live at 7544 Bryant. And the reason why I'm here this evening is to question the fact of why the city council decided to go with the same construction company that worked on 76th Street to do 66th Street. I know about the lawsuit over the retaining wall in an address east of Portland. Our boulevards are a mess. I've worked my fanny off to try to improve mine. Our trees, the boulevard trees, were cut down because the bark was torn off by the snowplows. Stumps are still there a year later. Our driveway issue is yet to be solved. The curbs are uneven and so in the winter, the water settles and freezes at the end of the driveway. Why would you go with the same company? Also, if you're watching this at home and you're a bike rider, please announce yourself. If you hit me and we're both, we're both gonna be hurt. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like everybody to stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I'd ask the approval of the minutes of the second concurrent City Council and Planning Commission Work Session of July 27, 2015, the Special City Council Work Session of July 28, 2015, and the regular City Council Meeting of July 28, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have presentations. Councilmember Howard.
I have the first one, and I have the honor of presenting the, this year's In Bloom Awards.
And that one too.
So I'll do this way. We have two honors tonight. I'll do the In Bloom Awards first. This is something the city's done for seventeen years, and forty-three households were nominated for the 2015 In Bloom Awards. Five judges, including a master gardener, a landscape architect, and members of the garden club, evaluated the properties based on aesthetics, materials, maintenance, and neighborhood impact, and want to thank two community businesses that generously offered prizes. The Richfield Bloomington Credit Union and Wagner's Greenhouse donated gift cards. And so, at this time, I'd like to honor the three winners. This year's three top winners are Sandra Schmidt and Sheila Fitzgerald at 7413 Sheridan Avenue, Nancy Buck at 6748 Grand Avenue, and Becky Rossum at thirty, at 336 Apple Lane.
Stay up, just have a step.
How about we give them a round of applause, huh?
Yeah, yeah. Beautiful garden. Go ahead.
In addition, wanted to note that this year, in addition to the annual winners, the city would like to honor Joe and Pam Krasanziak. Sorry if I got that right. Oh, wow. How about we, yeah, right. With a lifetime achievement award, recognizing your tireless efforts each year to, to make Richfield beautiful. And you've won this award multiple times in the past, and so this is, I guess, kind of like the Hall of Fame of the In Bloom Awards. And so we'd love to recognize you tonight and give you a round of applause as well.
Yeah. They want a picture now.
But turn your sign.
There you go. I've been to your garden many times. It's beautiful. Thanks.
And a thanks to everyone that participated this year, and I'm sure we'll be more back next year as well.
Beautiful.
And I have this one as well. We have another award. This is an award given by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada, and they announced recently that the city of Richfield received the GFOA's Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for its 2015 budget. This award is the highest form of recognition in governmental budgeting and represents a significant achievement by the city. And in order to receive this award, the city had to satisfy nationally recognized guidelines for effective budget presentations. And this is actually the thirtieth year the city has received the GFOA Distinguished Budget Presentation Award.
And go down to the mic and ask Chris to come up too.
Sure. Have we got an award?
He's getting there.
May I ask Chris Regis to come up and accept this award for all the great work you've done on behalf of the city and...
Read the inside.
And so what I have here is the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award presented to the city of Richfield for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2015.
Excellent. Thirty years. Yes.
You know what Chris does with, with those awards?
What's, what does he do with those?
He's papering the one wall, and then he sits behind the desk of that wall.
Is that right? Is that right? The next item is hats off to Hometown Hits. Councilmember Elliott, we'll start over this side.
Thank you. It's nice to precede Edwina and not follow. I don't have too much. I do want to say that, that the pizza house that I visited in 1961 when I was still in junior high school actually came out from Minneapolis to go there, has undergone a complete renovation. I think anybody that's used to fireside pizza is gonna be amazed at, at what the facility looks like now. There were a couple inspections over the day, fire suppression and some mechanical engineering, and I got a text indicating that it looks like everything is a go, and sometime either at the end of this week or the beginning of next week, it's gonna have a grand reopening. And the, the best thing about it is, is an expanded menu, but the pizza is not gonna change. I, you're not gonna recognize it. The design was from people that do a lot of work in the uptown area, so we're gonna be moving, much like Lynn 65 and some of the other facilities. I think, we had a work session before where a couple of the younger commission members, younger, I'd say anybody in their thirties is younger, but, had indicated that, that there's a sense that, that Richfield is, is being viewed as exciting, a place where things are happening progressive, all the things that you want to say, particularly when we're a close suburb to Minneapolis, which kind of relies on that reputation and, and is actually developing a national reputation. So, so by keeping pace with them, we're keeping pace with the people that are moving here and relocating, a lot of young professionals. And places like Lynn 65, fireside recognizing a move to the future and renovating and coming in with an expanded menu, but still being the same fireside in regards to pizzas, what, more of what Richfield needs to keep up and keep moving forward. So, I just want to invite anybody that, that likes pizza and hasn't, hasn't had it at fireside to stop by. Otherwise, go over and, and if you've never been there before, I think you're gonna really enjoy the atmosphere and what he's brought to Richfield with this renovation. So, everybody go.
Okay. Councilmember Garcia.
Okay, let's see. Let me tell you. First, I went a couple of weeks ago to the community center and spoke to Cheryl Dragotis, right?
Yes, of course.
And, you know, we visited for a little over an hour. We talked all about, we toured the building. We need a new community center, big, big time, in a bad way. I mean, and then we toured that, and then we went in and talked about all the programs that are run out of there. And there's programs, anything from taking Ollie classes, to cards, to eating food, and, and to the fair-for-all, gymnastics, dancing, you name it. So, really, my hats off to that, to the, to the community services staff people. They do a tremendous job, and everybody knows them. There's people constantly coming in and bringing flowers to the staff. So that's pretty impressive. You know, I, I kind of cleared my throat and wondered maybe I would get a little flower, but I didn't. So, just a little humor there. So, I, you know, for the folks that, that, you know, you get your little magazine every once in a while by mail. Look at it and, and don't put it away, because most of us look at it and put it away. And it's better if you just really focused on it and made a circle on what you might be interested, and go and try it. You know, I went, my husband and I went and had a nice meal. It was roast beef, mashed potatoes, green beans, and we had ice cream.
And cake, didn't you?
And cake, yes.
It was the birthday time you went. Oh, yeah, they have ice cream and cake. That's always great.
So it was a lot of fun, and you could bet we're gonna be there again. The other thing is Thursday night at 7:00 PM, we will be having the concert at Augsburg Park, and it's the Todd, Menton Duo. So that's gonna be a lot of fun, I think. Because, you know, anytime you have a duo, it's just different music and, and at the same, speaking of concerts, the Bartholomew House will be hosting a concert at 7:00 PM on the nineteenth. And that's fun too, because they, they really, it's a small group, and they, they really usually talk to the audience and try to play some of the tunes the audience wants to sing along to or whatever. Just a lot of fun. And finally, St. Peter's is having their pig roast on the fifteenth, on a Saturday, and you can look on their website or give them a call, and they'll give you all the particulars. So, supporting our community is really what we're all about, and, and I, I think Mr. Councilmember Elliott put it the right way, you know. We need, we need, you know, to really diversify all our businesses, as well as our housing, as well as, you know, what the public wants to do, because, you know, we want to keep the, the folks in Richfield. You know, we don't want to gate, it's not a gated community, but, you know, I mean, more or less. I mean, it could be, because, because we have, we have, we have such a, such a fun, fun city, and, and the progress that is made, has been made, just tremendous. And, and that's due a lot to, to the city's staff, to the citizens, and to the previous councils.
Councilmember Howard.
My one item, I just wanted to thank everybody who participated in National Night Out. It was a beautiful night. I think this city had one hundred and sixty-five, one hundred and seventy parties. And I also want to just thank the Police Department and the Fire Department, all the volunteers that helped get to as many of those parties as possible, and to many of the council members as well. I know it's not quite as exciting for the kids when the council members show up as a, as a firefighter or a police officer. And so it was great that everybody could be out in force, and there were just a lot of smiles and a lot of good times that were had, and it's just great to be part of the city that takes National Night Out so seriously, or Night to Unite, rather, so.
Councilmember?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Got a quantity of items, but I'd like to say National Night Out was fun. And if you ride a police motorcycle, the kids still like you.
Yes.
You don't have the cool factor yet. You don't have the cool factor.
I also want to comment on the Wildlife Marathon. It was a huge turnout, and I don't know where we get these rockets of people that want to run in this, because I think this guy set a record again. It's getting difficult for us to stay ahead of him with the motorcycles, and that gets pretty, but it was a, a great day. Everybody commented that the course was well, even though we had to have a little glitch where they had to fill in Seventieth Street and make a path across Portland. But everything was well done. I gotta comment to staff, when we did the pre-run, everything was in order. Couldn't find anything out of order this year, so I want to thank for that. And then I'd like to step over to the podium to show some off.
Cool.
Hopefully the overhead will work. I turned it on. Oh, how do we focus?
Should focus.
Ah, they're getting it. Okay. As you know, Richfield has a Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Committee, and we got this, even though it happened last year, they're a little slow in giving it to us, but we got a certificate appreciation to the Richfield Beyond Yellow Ribbon Committee in recognition of your group's outstanding efforts in helping further the mission Remember, Honor, Teach. Your hard work and dedication in the program is greatly appreciated, and we do that through also sponsoring grease on Fort Snelling that we put out in December. So I just want to acknowledge that group that they're working hard.
And I want to thank Tom. Tom was the one who spearheaded that group. You were the one. That's why we have, wear Yellow Ribbon City. Thank you.
And then I'll get on the issue of MAC. It's been busy over there. There's been a couple of things in the paper, but I did drop on your desk in front of you that we at the NOC were concerned, a lot of the aircraft weren't abiding by the 10:30 to 6:00 AM no-fly zone, if you want to call that. It, the overseas flights have to do it sometimes to meet their, you know, destination and that, but we found out more than just overseas was doing it. So what we did at the NOC, we took a vote, and we had a letter drafted up, which is in front of you, and I'm thinking of signing it tomorrow. Basically what it says, it, even though the NOC has no authority, we've asked all the users at the airport to abide by the 10:30 PM to 6:00 AM no-fly. Delta has been pumping out planes at 5:30. Our city manager knows. He gets waked up in the morning by them, and
This morning.
They've been doing this to kind of meet their schedules and that, and other places, but we've asked them to see, you know, don't do this, because if you saw in the paper a little while ago, there's a big upset in the community that all of a sudden the profile for the sound got bigger.
Yes.
And that was due to the fact that they're flying after these hours, there's a ten decibel penalty, which extends that out. So it, in reality, the planes aren't doing anything different other than flying at the wrong time. So that's where that comes out. So we're gonna, there's letters sent to all the major users there. If you look at it and maybe let me know if you think I should sign on it, I am willing to go forward and sign it. Other communities that'll be signing it is Bloomington, Eagan, and Minneapolis, and then the at-large representative from Apple Valley, which also is Sunfish Lake and Edina. So, and everybody is on board with this, and all we're really doing is telling them, try to play by the rules.
I think we should advise him to sign.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Okay.
Okay. I thank you for your support on that.
You bet.
Then the other day, I was in my backyard, and I looked, and I could almost see the pilot's eyes, and I ran in-house, grabbed my radio, and they were flying off three zero left. Normal heading is two sixty, and I'm hearing the controller giving them turns to two hundred, which is darn near south. So I'm trying to figure out. I went on there, looked to see if there's weather, whatever. I got mad and called them, and also filed a complaint. And I got a letter back from the MAC, who then had talked to the tower, that it was a misuse of airspace. I ain't figured that, what that means yet, but I think they're aware that we're watching them, and the turns, you just can't do that. At first, I thought the winds were so strong, you know, coming from the northwest, that they have to get so many planes off, so they were trying to funnel that many planes off a couple of runways, because they couldn't use runway one seven, which they didn't say was the case. They just said it was a misuse of airspace. Now, having said that, in the paper, you just heard that the FAA wants the Minneapolis Airport to watch converging arrivals. And so what that means, runway one seven may become unusable when they're arriving on three zero right, because what happens is they have a situation if either plane can't land, that they have a, an issue. We'll probably find out from the NOC what's gonna happen on that issue, but it really comes down to, they normally can land ninety planes in that configuration. Now they can only land sixty.
Wow.
So does that mean, are they gonna extend out the arrivals? Are they gonna throw them all on three zero and one two, which the neighborhoods now are gonna have them literally tail to nose, you know? We won't find out for a little bit, but I'm kind of curious what's gonna happen. Are they gonna space out now, and we're gonna have a constant roar instead of surges?
Wow.
So I'll try to get those answers back to you, but just be aware that the FAA has thrown it on Minneapolis Airport, and they're scrambling, trying to figure out what they can do. It doesn't happen in all situations. If they have a, a south flow or whatever, everything's honky-dory. It's when we have that heavy northwest flow where they all try to go out that way, and they can't land that way.
Yeah.
Or the other arrivals. See what else do I have from the NOC? That, that probably does it, so I'll be busy keeping on top of that.
Yeah, it is. Boy, you have been. You have been, and you stay very, very well-formed.
Hats off to Councilmember Fitz Henry, because I, you know, when there's an issue out there, you know, he gives us a lot of details, and sometimes, you know.
Well, he's gonna catch up too. He's part of it too, but...
Right, right. But, you know, it's really, it's really important, because you being a pilot, I think you can really help a lot, because a lot of that stuff is technical.
When you see the foresight of what, if they do something, what's gonna happen to us? You have enough to think it through, to the, you know, five steps down the road, and that matters.
So thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks. I, I want to thank staff. One of the things that Councilmember Elliott and I, is we are the stormwater liaisons. Wow, and coveted post. I know you all want to be one, but it's just Councilmember Elliott and I. But one of the things that was addressed in the 66th Street construction was we had asked the city staff to look at, we have several pretty significant stormwater issues, and there's a real good possibility that we will resolve at least some of these as we go through the reconstruction. We've asked staff to do that, and I want to thank, we just had a study session before this, and Pat and I have also been over the public works, looking at even the broader picture. This, this would be very nice for a lot of residents, a lot of the flooding and things that go on on our roads and the problems that it causes. So I want to thank staff for that. We also had a couple of proposals, housing proposals, one over at the St. Richard's site, and one at the old garage site, and I just want to say to those online, if you live in those neighborhoods, there are open houses. If you don't know what it is, you can call the city. You can look at the city website. If you don't have availability of the city website, call and find out when those open houses. Please participate. These developers do take into consideration the comments from the, the area and from the residents, and I think we have some good proposals coming forward, so I'm really excited about that. And I like National Night Out, too. If you looked on my Facebook, I had a picture with me with another redhead. I found another redhead. I always like to take a picture of that and post it. The other things that I really like, that you don't see a lot of these days, and it has to do with, I think, my age, is deviled eggs, and I just love deviled eggs. And there aren't that many people make deviled eggs, so I always get somebody's recipe or something when they have deviled eggs at, at National Night Out, so that's so fun. The other things is, is believe it or not, we are preparing for hockey season. The, the young men will be in town September first, and that's when we start with some of the practices and such. We are in need of folks who would host one of these young players. It's called a billet family, and, and I've been doing it for two years. I had one of the best kids ever, and I'm doing it again. I really, really enjoyed this. Had a wonderful young man. There's a stipend that goes to help the families with monthly expenses, and the boys come from September till March. They're not home much, because they have to be out at the hockey practices. They have to be at the rink. They have to be working out, and they have to go to games, and some of them are weigh games. They have to have jobs, and they have to do community services. But they are a joy to have in your, your household and your family. I know my billet helped, helped mow the lawn, helped shovel, shovel the snow, and helped lift heavy objects for me. It was just a delight, and I would encourage anyone. And if you want to be a billet family, I'm gonna give you my home phone number, everybody has it anyway, please call, and I will talk to you more about this, and we could screen you. It's, it's, I'm at six one two eight six six eight seven five three. And we need a few more host families, and they'd really like to host them in Richfield or the surrounding area here. Some of the kids are as far out as Lionel Lakes and places like that. They'd like to get them closer in here, so that, you know, when the bad weather comes, we'd have a place. And I know we have a lot of generous and wonderful families that might want to take in one of these young, especially those who have younger kids playing hockey. It'd be great to have a bigger brother in there for a while. Then the last thing I want to talk about, I'm going down too. To the screen. Put it here, right? Did large that? There it goes. This is a Save the Date card. You're gonna see these around the city. The Autumn Wine and Cheese Gathering, which is a really big hit. This usually has over two hundred people show up this. This is a partnership with Bill Filmer of our liquor stores. We bring in all kinds of wine vendors. Last year, we also brought in a whiskey vendor, and we brought in some extra, new cheese vendors. We'll have some more things that are new this year, too, and we'll have a Harpist come play. So this is the Save the Date Card. You'll see them around town, so plan right now if you want to come to the Wine and Cheese Gathering. It'll be at the Woodlake Center Building where Houlihan's is, and they offer a special dinner menu that night as well at a discount. But they're redoing the whole interior of that. It's beautiful space. You'll just love it. There's more seating, and there's actually more space, and it'll be spread out a little bit more. So it'll be a lot of fun time, and again, fabulous prizes. We always have fabulous prizes, so hope to see you all there.
Mary, you should have said about, you know, what, what the foundation does with the money.
Well, the Richfield Foundation is a community foundation, and it's separate from our city, but they focus on families, at-risk youth, and help, helping out the community. It has to have a community tied to Richfield. And just recently, we now have mini grants for smaller things, like we've given money to the senior party, so long as kids are doing good things. If you, we do a matching grant with that, up to a thousand dollars. And so we, we help a lot of different things without, throughout the city. The other thing is, is we're looking to find some good grants around environmental issues. So we're seeking some new grants and some new things. It's all about community and how we can network more and do more about community. So those are the kinds of things that we do. And grantings will start pretty soon, at the end of October. We'll be sending out... We'll be sending out um proposals for those who want to submit, submit for grants. And this year, we're probably going to give one of the highest amounts out that we have. And I don't have the exact, but I think it's, it might be historic. So that's kind of nice to, to hear. Um, with that, I would uh ask um council's approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. City manager.
Uh, thank you, mayor. Members of the city council, the consent calendar contains several separate items, which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. And once a consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and the recommended actions will also have been approved. And no further council action on those items would be necessary. Tonight, we have several items on the consent calendar, starting off with item A, consideration of the approval of the second amendment to the site lease agreement at sixty-seven hundred Portland Avenue between the city of Richfield and Sprint Spectrum Realty Company LP to a modification in cellular telephone antenna facilities. Item B, consideration of the approval of the first amendment to the site lease agreement at sixty-three fifty-five Penn Avenue between the city of Richfield and T-Mobile Central LLC to a modification in cellular telephone antenna facilities. Item C is consideration of the approval of an annual request for a temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for the Church of Saint Peter located at sixty-seven thirty Nicollet Avenue for their pig roast event, which is going to be held on August fifteenth, two thousand fifteen. Item D is consideration of the approval of resolution releasing tax forfeited land located at sixty-three oh four Washburn Avenue for sale to the public. Item E is consideration of the approval of a first reading of an ordinance amending the city's zoning code. The proposed ordinance would clarify regulations related to accessory uh dwelling units. Item F is consideration of the approval of a resolution authorizing an interim use permit to allow Richfield Bloomington Honda to use city-owned property at seventy-seven hundred Pillsbury Avenue for employee parking. And finally, item G, consideration of the approval of a request for a temporary parking lease agreement for Richfield Bloomington Honda to use the city-owned property at seventy-seven hundred Pillsbury Avenue for employee parking. And that would conclude tonight's consent calendar.
I'll move the calendar.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose? Consent calendar is approved. Um, council member Garcia.
Oh, we, mine already.
Yeah, I know already.
Okay, good. Anyway, this is, this is an open hearing. So, uh, and it's regarding My Burger. It's located at the Lindale Station, which is on sixty-sixth and Lindale. So what words, what they are seeking is approval of our, of the new on-sale wine and three point two percent malt liquor. They have purchased the license and, and they, they need our um approval in order to, to do that. Um, My Burger LLC Doing Business As My Burger, it's located at sixty-five fifty-five Lindale Avenue. And if, if you've ever tasted a My Burger, you know, that's what I'm telling you, you know, we, we've got everything in this city. Um, if you really um, um haven't tasted one, you'll, you'll probably become a regular. So uh, on, on June the eleventh, twenty fifteen, the city received the application materials from My Burger Operations Doing Business As My Burger. And uh, so um, all the requirements have been met. Information documents have been received. Uh, prorated fees have been paid. Um, real estate taxes are current and they have the insurance. The proof of, of commercial and liquor liability insurance has been received. And let's see what else. Um, public safety is required to do a background investigation and that has been completed. The results of the inves- investigation are summarized in a report uh attached to this item. Public Safety Director has reviewed the background investigation report. None of the information in the report would cause the Public Safety Director to recommend denial of the requested licenses. So this is a public hearing and so I'd like to open the public hearing.
Public hearing is open. Would anyone like to come forward to speak? Is anyone here from My Burger? Would you please come up and say hello?
Mr. Abdo.
Yes, yes, and introduce yourself and get some PR here.
Wonderful. Uh, my name is Paul Abdo. I am um, one of the owners of My Burger. And we're, I think we're opening up on Monday is the plan depending upon everything going forward. So we're trying to keep it a, well, a little bit hushed because there's been a lot of um.
This is televised, sorry.
Inquiry and active, well, but I mean, up until now. So it's kind of one of those things where.
Think the cover's blown.
Now, now I know, we're, we're in the business, but um, there's been a lot of excitement, which is great for us. So we're, we're really excited to be in the city of Richfield. Um, we think we've got a great location and a great corner. And um, I think we're going to bring something to the city that the city hasn't seen yet. So um, it's a really fun space, really excited about it and our burgers are really good. So. Councilman Edwina Garcia, thank you so much. We appreciate the support and wonderful. Um, but um, we're looking forward to serving burgers and serving beer and being a uh positive um light in the community. If that's, I guess, the appropriate terminology for a, for a hearing.
I look forward to seeing you there.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm.
Absolutely.
I'm sorry.
No, no, absolutely. I said, I, I don't know, burgers have always been.
One of your weaknesses.
Top favorites. And when I went to that My Burger, um, it just, I don't know, it just hit the spot.
Yeah.
And I, I, it's too big for me though, but so I have to take.
Half of it home.
Ha- half of it home and nuke it.
Yeah.
For, for the next day.
Probably doesn't taste as good as that after you put it in the microwave.
No, absolutely not.
We'll probably have to get our story straight to avoid the open meeting laws issues on Monday as we head over.
So there's, there's any questions with the council? I'd love to be, I'd love to answer them or there's, you know, I guess any.
What else is on your menu?
So we're going to, it'll be a, a full burger menu. Um, burgers, you pretty much can, we, we've got them set up. So a lot of our favorites are up there, all of our favorites are up there, but you basically can make a burger any way that you want it. You come in, tell us how you like it, if you want avocados or bacon or onions, jalapenos, uh Cajun spices, things like that. We're happy to put them on there for you. And then we're going to offer gluten-free buns. We're going to start out, I believe, with salads. Um, it's been kind of a big request over the last couple of weeks since we've done it over at our Lake Calhoun location. And we're going to do um hand-dipped malts, different varietals of that. So it's like that old school, really fatty, milky ice cream. That makes them taste really good. Um, and then I think, yeah, we've got onion rings there and then we'll have seasoning for our french fries as well. And then we'll have um all, I'm assuming the rest of the meeting goes well and um we were allowed our, our liquor license. Um, it's going to be all local beer. So all local craft beer. So six one two brew. Uh, Surly's going to be in there, Lucid, Indeed, um Fulton, I believe. So I think the only non, non-local, which we are considering local, is going to be Hams Beer.
Hmm.
Um, just for fun.
Used to be.
Yeah.
Yeah, used to be, used to be local. So yeah, yep, so that's, that's what we're going to be offering.
Are you going to have outside seating?
We are going to, yep. Yeah, I believe uh twenty-four seats. We're working with the landlord currently to, there's a little bit of a mix-up with when the fence needed to be installed. Uh, so we're hoping to have it done by the middle of next week. Uh, but yeah, I think we'll have twenty, uh, twenty, twenty-four seats will be out on the patio.
Wow, twenty-four. I didn't realize we got that many in there. That's wonderful.
Yeah.
Looking forward to it.
Yeah, we are too.
Your sleep, your staff's all going to go down there and fall asleep after all those milk. You're not going to get any work out of them.
A nap and don't encourage him. You know, my, my mouth is watering when you. Yeah, we should have done this on Monday then. So anyway, um, so we look forward and um, you know, to a real good, good hamburger. And uh, and you know, and some days I'm going to go in there and have a malt.
Yep.
Or a Coke or a beer.
Perfect. Look at, you can, we have, I forgot to mention, we've got turkey burgers too and veggie burgers. So.
Oh, good, good.
Staff is feeling like they don't want to go into a food coma. You can come in and get a veggie burger, a turkey burger and get fruit instead of fries and that'll.
Oh, fruits and fries.
It seems to work. So you don't, you know, kind of do the base plant down to the desk.
Well, we wish you well.
Thank you very much.
I'm just going to hold you responsible. You've got Ms. Garcia stepping outside of the box a little bit here. So, so you're in charge of her well-being when you.
She's been great to us. I'm more than, I'm more than happy to, to take on that role and responsibility.
Great, great.
Yep, not a problem at all.
Well, this is a public hearing. I'll continue the public hearing. Would anyone else like to come forward? Anyone else at all?
Move to close the hearing.
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Oppose? Public hearing is closed. Council member.
So I will um make my motion that we approve the issuance of new on-sale wine and three point two percent malt liquor licenses for My Burger uh Operations LLC Doing Business As My Burger located at sixty-five fifty-five Lindale Avenue South.
I'll second that. Any other discussion or comments? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. I guess we'll be there. Yes, thank you. Thank you for coming tonight. Council member Elliot, you are next on the.
Thank you, mayor. This item is for the consideration of the second reading of an ordinance changing Sunday hours of alcohol service from ten AM to eight AM. Um, city code currently states that hotels, restaurants and clubs that hold an on-sale intoxicating liquor license may obtain a Sunday sales license and serve alcoholic beverages between the hours of ten AM Sunday and two AM Monday. On May first, two thousand fifteen, the governor signed the omnibus liquor bill that includes language allowing the sale of intoxicating liquor to begin at eight AM on Sundays. City is not required to allow Sunday liquor sales at eight AM. It is optional under state law. The first reading of this ordinance amendment was heard by the city council on July twenty-eighth, two thousand fifteen. With that being said, I would first at this time move to approve the second reading of an ordinance allowing for Sunday liquor sales to begin at eight AM.
Second.
Any discussion? Comment?
I, I would, I would just suggest that, that uh, there was, there was a move afoot that allowed Governor Dayton to go ahead and, and pass this and it has to do with a lot of the, the, the progressive things that are going on, the city brew houses, uh, just a lot of things that kind of tie into that. It's not necessarily an endorsement of getting up on Sunday morning and having a Bloody Mary.
Yeah.
But i- it goes with a lot of the activities and a lot of things that go on in the community. So it's, it's just a recognition of a movement and maybe it's also a recognition that, that in terms of, of chemical dependency, Minneapolis, Minnesota's kind of was at the forefront of the whole curve on that. So, so we recognize the problems, but we also recognize that we're adults and, and we're going to give them the opportunities to do what they want to do and move forward. So I think, I think all we're doing is staying in tune with, with the larger metropolitan area and I don't think we're promoting unnecessary drinking early on Sunday mornings.
And I agree with you a hundred percent.
Yeah. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Council member Fitz Henry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to ask staff to help me on this one, but the item number nine is consideration of a proposal for WSB and Associates Incorporated to provide preliminary and final design services, environmental documentation for the Seventy-Seventh Street East Extension and Trunk Highway Seventy-Seven Crossing Project for an amount of two million, one hundred forty-six thousand, yeah, one hundred forty-six thousand, eight hundred forty-one dollars and ninety-two cents. And I'll ask uh our uh city engineer, Kristen Nash, or she'll comment on this and brief us what's going on.
Sure. So there's been a change to the item and that, there was a letter on the um dais when he first came in. Uh, item nine up in the upper right-hand corner. Um, what was attached to the original staff report and I'll get into the, um, well, the underpass, we've got the two point five million that was awarded through the local road improvement program, up to two point five million. As you read, uh, council member Fitz Henry, the, the design was estimated to be less than that. Uh, originally, we got a funding letter from Mindat that allowed us to award the um agreement to the consultant stating that the local road improvement funds were up to two point five million as, as suggested before. We got a, an updated revised letter dated today um stating that, and then we were asked to replace this as part of it. And the change basically is that it is now up to two point one four six, you know, eight four two, the same amount that was in the staff report for the consultant fees. And that any cost associated with any overruns would then be um the city's cost. So that's the change.
Can I, can I just say, mayor, before we move on, uh, when Kristen told me about the letter, I immediately decided I was going to call uh Mindat, talk to the person who authored the letter. And um, and I did that. And, and I have to say, um, you know, it, it's the kind of thing that you start off with, you know, we started off looking at, uh, originally hoping to get fifteen million dollars out of that, um, out of that bonding bill. Um, we had a number of meetings with Mindat as we were trying to figure out exactly how much money we were going to get. Uh, finally ended up um getting the, up to two point five million. And um, and so I said, you know, this really kind of bugs me. Because, so we have this, we have this uh estimate for the project and going forward with the contract. But so you're telling me if something comes up and something happens that was unforeseen in putting this together, that even though we were given up to two point five million dollars, which is a fraction of what we thought we were going to get, you're saying that if something happens, it's going to fall on the city of Richfield's pocket? And keep in mind, Mindat, that we're already paying all of staff time to work on this. This is already coming out of the city of Richfield's pocket. And the response was yes, that's the way we do it. And I said, so you're telling me that never has Mindat ever went ahead, done something like this and had, had the contract adjusted uh because something happened? Well, yeah, I guess we've done that sometimes.
Yes.
And I said, well, you know what? Then how does it, how is it going to work here? Well, you can always file an amendment or ask for an amendment. I said, okay, we can ask for amendment, but, but tonight we're asked, if we want to get this money, that we have to say that if anything ever happens in excess of um the amount that you've got here, that it's going to come out of our pocket. But, but we can ask you for an amendment. That's right. I said, you know, that's really difficult for me to swallow. And to the point where the person said, well, you have to just trust the process at Mindat. And I said, I honestly said this and I, I said, I can't see through the phone, but I can't believe you're saying that to me with a straight face, knowing what's happened so far between the city of Richfield and Mindat.
Yeah.
I'm getting money for this project.
Yeah.
And you have, and so if you have any doubt in the world why I doubt this.
Yeah.
Um, this is why I'm having this phone conversation with you.
Yeah.
But there's really nothing we can do. Um, but go forward, take it as they're giving it to us. Um, as I was told by the Mindat person, well, you know, it's really a good deal. You're getting two million, one hundred forty-six thousand, eight hundred forty-one dollars and ninety-two cents for your project. I said, great. And we ended the conversation. So um, I don't know what would happen if some, I, I don't know that it's going to go and require more funding. But in, in case it did, I'm really disappointed at the way this plays out.
Yeah, it's been a struggle. It's been a very, it's been a lot of struggle with Mindat. It really has been. And if it hadn't been for Paul Teason and Linda Slocum, we wouldn't be sitting here with the ten million or the, even the two point one. Um, and it's the pressure that's been put on them and even the governor's office too. I, I know it was a real strain and I don't want to thank everybody for all the support I got. Because I, I'm sure the governor doesn't even want to see my phone number come up again, you know, so.
But it's nice to have, um, you know, to bring it to their attention and stand up for it.
Yeah.
Instead of just, oh, yeah, yeah, we will, well, okay, okay. It's nice to actually say what you need to say and not be afraid of saying it. Because that's what happens. There's too many people that just are so shy when it comes to, and I don't think this, this community is that way.
Yeah.
I, you know, we, we've got an engineer that I think will, will, you know, will maximize every opportunity she can to make sure that, you know, that we do get, we do get what's promised to us, quite frankly.
Yeah. Please, Kristen?
I'd like to add um that this is not the agreement with Mindat and we have not seen that. Um, well, we've seen it, but we're, we, you guys have not seen it yet. Um, so the council will probably, um, we're working on that. And that's one of the things, I think it was like the um, one of the exhibits is what she was referring to in the email that will say the city will have to bear those costs if there are any overruns. And Mary, I don't know where we're at with that because they've, that was on the agenda.
Yeah.
A month ago. And then it got pulled because of the agreement. And so now they're letting us move ahead with the consultant, which is kind of what we, our thing was, was to get the design moving. And we're, we're going to be finalizing that agreement yet. So maybe, maybe two weeks from now, maybe a month. So maybe, maybe two weeks from now, maybe a month. I'm not exactly sure where we're at with that.
Okay. All right, thank you. Councilmember?
So having said all that, are we good with the motion that we're going to go forward with here? I'll go ahead and make.
I would still recommend going forward with the design at this point. I think we'll work out that overrun issue, whether it's through the agreement or whether we just move ahead with design and then halt if it gets to the point where we have overruns. I'm confident that there's some cushion built into that estimate because we had an indication that maybe this would be the case.
Okay, thank you.
And we did ask, we did ask the consultant to put a little bit extra.
Maybe our consultant knows MINDOT well enough to know that.
Okay, then I'll go ahead with the motion that we approve the hiring of WSB and Associates Incorporated to provide preliminary and final design services and environmental documentation for the Seventy-Seven Street East Extension and Trunk Highway Seventy-Seven Crossing Project for an amount of two million, one hundred forty-six thousand, eight hundred forty-one dollars and ninety-two cents.
I'll second that. Do I have some more seconds?
I'll third it.
Fourth.
All right, okay. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose? Motion carries. City Manager.
I really don't, I really don't have any specific report this time.
Okay, all right. I think that was enough.
I've got a request for the City Manager. If you ever call me in that frame of mind, please give me a heads up or something. I don't know how you're going to do that, but let me know. You're not happy.
The text. Claims and payroll?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Seeing no further business, I call this adjourned. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Good night.
Enjoy the good weather.